Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. I want to begin by thanking those of you who waited patiently for us for doing so. We appreciate that. The school board meeting of January 14th, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 6:50 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or hers highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Please welcome Lauren Skapansky, our student representative this evening, from the School Board Student Advisory Committee. Lauren is a senior at Idabaker High School, where she is in the Education Academy, and will be continuing in this field at Colorado State University in the fall. Lauren participates in many clubs at Baker, as well as running her own. She says that education is a passion of hers and is thrilled to be here tonight to get the opportunity to be sitting in front of all of you. Welcome, Lauren. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, one acknowledgment, public comment, consent action items, which include seven items under executive services, three items under academic services, five items under business services, one item under human resources, eight items under operations, as well as one item under attorney recommendations, which is good cause. Mr. Quick, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Madam Chair, there is a case pending dealing with House Bill 7069. Actually, there are two cases pending dealing with House Bill 7069, which Lee County has is a part of. The first, which I colloquially refer to as the main case, is the appeal before the Florida Supreme Court. That's not the one I'm talking about today. The second is more of a is what I'll call the secondary case, and that has to deal with a challenge to a payout that was made when it was first enacted. That payout has since been paid, obviously, and the issue has arguably become moot, and many of the other counties had reached out, and we had a conference call with regard to what to do, and the consensus was that most preferred to withdraw. And so this is coming before the board for discussion, and my recommendation would be to withdraw, which I'll get into more detail about that. But the reason for the timing is that there is a matter set for hearing coming up in the next few weeks on that case.
Mr. Quick, as presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Also included is one item for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? By Mrs. Giovinelli and seconded by Mrs. Vaughn, please record your vote. Please do. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Seven zero. Fine, thank you. This evening, Mrs. Patrica will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Gittens will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Lord, thank you for your guidance as we deliberate and make decisions in the best interests of our students and our community. Please extend that guidance to our legislators as another session begins. May your wisdom, your compassion, and your mercy guide their deliberations and decisions in the best interests of our teachers, our staff, our students, and our entire community. Amen.
Please welcome Sergeant First Class William Roseberry, Army Instructor of the JROTC -- that's always hard to say -- JROTC Program of East Lee County High School, who will introduce the cadet presenting the colors this evening. Sergeant First Class Roseberry, retired after 23 years of active service, thank you for that, and is a veteran of Desert Storm. This is his 16th year teaching in the Lee County School District. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Felipe Umbrella. A senior at East Lee County High School, he is a team commander of the Jared C. Raider Team and a member of the Color Guard Exhibition and Marchsmanship Teams. He has participated in the Jared C. Summer Camp for the last two years and served the community through activities such as the rain barrel painting and food drive. He is the president of the Spanish Honor Society and a member of the College Reach-Out Program. Upon graduation, he plans to attend college and major in psychology and minor in music. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, our student representative, Lauren Skapansky, will present the character education word and design for January. Lauren?
Our word for January is commitment. The definition being binding yourself to a course of action despite obstacles. The quote is, "Commitment is what transfers a promise into reality," by Abraham Lincoln. The design you see displayed was created by Violet Gray, a 10th grade student from Norfolk Myers High School.
Thank you, Lauren. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Quick, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Fisher, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to, clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding quorum shall be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have 11 cards, although two have indicated they'd like to present together, so 10.
Thank you very much. We offer the opportunity for those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment process to raise their hands and provide their names. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. If you did not complete a blue card prior to public comment, please proceed to Mrs. Johnson on your left after completing your comments so that we will have a written record. Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not complete a card and wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Mr. Quick, please call the first card.
Jerry Ware.
Good evening and Happy New Year to each one of you. I have two concerns this evening. One of them addresses the 2020 census. I serve as the chair for my social action for my sorority. We have also the Divine Nine, which consists of all the sororities and paternities in the area, and we are a complete count committee that will be trying to address the needs of wards one, two, and three in the outlined areas because we are low performing. I am asking Ms. Betsy Vaughn, who I believe is the person for the school district, to assist me in trying to assist the school board in addressing the needs in that part of our area to help get better participation. So if you would please get in contact with me, I would appreciate it. My second concern is to you, Mrs. Jordan. I would appreciate if you would assist along with the chair in setting up a meeting for those of us in the community to address Franklin Park and the progress on its -- whatever's going to happen to it. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ware.
Lou Navarro.
You have three minutes.
Three minutes, yes.
Good evening, Superintendent Board. I wish you all a happy, healthy new year. I underscore the word healthy. It will be three years since my beloved wife died in our bed, and I found her. Very traumatic, worse than the Vietnam War, which was a waste of 58,600 men and women. Look at your clothes and Nike shoes, made in Vietnam. I would like to congratulate the Polk County teachers on their walkout to go to Tallahassee for the Monday protest for pay. I called their FEA and congratulate them. I guess our association did support that with 150 teachers, which underscores how much money the teachers need. I feel this is -- I'm still upset about -- are the boards still meeting a board member once a month with the town president? I still feel this is government out of the sunshine. I challenge the board to give their salary to the teachers. Said in the news press, you do not do it for the pay, especially Ms. Patrica. Well, give it to the teachers. That was one of my campaign pledges. Dr. Atkins, you ignore my letters. You're going to get an F on my report card for communication skills. And your pal Roger Lloyd, I call him affectionately Radar Roger, Transportation Director as well. What are we doing to cut bus stops? That young man said another student was hurt at the last meeting in Lehigh. Why do you not answer my letters about my proposals to divert money of our bogus sales tax to teachers' salaries instead of buildings we cannot staff? I had several bus drivers say you raise a base salary, but you left the senior drivers high and dry with a 33 cent per hour raise. You will do that to the senior teachers. I do resent your 10% annuity of your choice, which I do not believe any superintendent in the state gets. I could be wrong. Also, I'm still trying to get with the county to see what they are doing with our half a cent tax roundup, which is 7%. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan, for the report. I'm still working on it. My son quit teaching. Ask Mr. Purdue how good he was. Shame on you. Mr. Purdue was a great administrator. You should have made him a principal instead of a transportation assistant. I don't know. When are you guys going to wake up and help the teachers? Nobody wants to teach anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yisar Parent and Leila Hornsby.
And I am Leila Hornsby.
We are in fifth grade and from Veterans Park Academy for the Arts.
This evening, we are here to encourage you to continue to pay and support arts education.
In order to do that, we will explain our experiences and others' experiences.
We hope you enjoy. To begin with, my experience began at Guitar Club. Guitar Club is really important to me because not only do I play guitar, but I am around others who also play guitar. In Guitar Club, we get to learn new things, name our guitars, and possibly get to perform in front of others.
And now, my experience started with elementary cup choir. Cup choir made me more open than I already was. Also, we get to go on cool field trips and sing in front of people.
Finally, we've talked to many teachers and students about what they think is important about the arts.
Most people said the arts is a way to express themselves regarding different cultures. So in conclusion to this statement.
They think that the arts is important because they -- because, sorry, it helps students and teachers to be more open with their feelings.
So if you keep paying and supporting arts education, more people will come to our schools.
And on top of that, more people would be happier.
Oh, yeah, did you know that the arts is a way to show your opinion?
Like mine. One of my favorites is art. Let me show you why. Arts is one of my favorites because you can get creative, show yourself by drawing, and participate in many competitions. If you continue to pay and support arts education, we will be able to do even more things in art.
Now it's my turn to explain my opinion about music. Music teaches students the element of sound. I like music because it allows us to express ourselves with sound. If you didn't pay and support arts education, it would be harder to communicate.
In conclusion, we all love arts education.
Thank you for taking your time to listen to our speech.
We hope that you decide to keep supporting and to pay for arts education. Thank you.
Thank you. It was awesome, yeah.
Marvin Goat.
Yes. Goats.
School Board and Dr. Atkins, I'm here to discuss an issue that's been going for a long time. For over 20 years, I've worked with multiple superintendents as well as school boards. Most of the pictures out there are gentlemen I have worked with as superintendents. In all this time, I have fought for the lost teachers of this district. The lost teachers are the substitute or guest teachers, as we have changed the name Once again, I have been told at recent meetings that there is no money for substitute teachers, so there will be no increase for 2020. I guess we can wait another five or 10 years. No problem. I've come to recognize something that I see in all school boards and all superintendents, and that is that we talk a good game. We don't really care about the personnel. We don't care about the teachers. We don't care about the guest teachers. You really don't have their best interests. We've been told over and over there are no funds for subs, but you always seem to come up with money. In today's paper, you say there's a possibility that we can come up with $580,000 for this company, Davis Demographics and Planning. Where does that money come from? If we can't pay substitute teachers and teachers, where does this money come from? Is there a magic kitty somewhere? I'm not sure. Yet we have had no decent increase for substitute teachers. And one of the things I wanted to bring the attention of the board, then once again today, there were 588 teachers absent from the classroom. Covered all but 62. That's because we care, the teacher care, the subs care about our kids. Sick or not, pay or not, we show up to do the job. I wish you would do the same. Thank you.
Kevin Mulhern.
For the record, my name is Kevin Mulhern. I've never spoken before the school board before, but tonight's night. I live in the Allen Park Elementary area, and after several years of complaining about a lack of sidewalk on the northeastern side of the school, the city of Fort Myers has finally stepped to the plate and is going to create that. Unfortunately, out of the three potential places they could put this sidewalk, they chose the worst spot possible. It's the least safe, and it's going to cost the most money to implement. Luckily, I have several neighbors that feel the same way. We got them to stop that project, to talk to us, to reconsider their location, and I'm hoping that the school board and/or the principal of that facility will get behind us and see that the obvious choice is the one closest to the fence, which is the safest and least expensive to build, which is amazing that they didn't choose that one. I've watched for years kids walking in the streets, and it just terrified me that some kid was going to be run over before they finally put this sidewalk in. So I would so appreciate any help that the school board can yield with your power to give your input to the city of Fort Myers and make this done the right way. Thank you.
Mina Sokaras-Dogling. Sorry.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mina Sokaras-Dagling, and I am a reading coach and a gifted I'm Mina Sokaras-Dagling, and I am a reading coach and a gifted teacher from River Hall Elementary. So sad to see Dr. Barfield go. She's been an awesome principal. We'll miss you a lot. But I'm here to talk about the rally and tally last night, also known the Rally for Education. It was a magnificent thing to experience. The atmosphere, I can't describe it. It was... It would have lifted anybody's spirit just being there. Because of the education, people that were there, the dedication of our educators, the solidarity of our educators, the camaraderie of our educators. It was more than amazing. I really can't put it into words, except you had to have been there to experience The statistics from the rally, there were over 15,000 people marching. There were over 500 stories on all networks trending about the rally and tally, and it was the number one story for 48 hours. And this was posted by our president of FEA, Fed, who was one of my babies when I was a teacher over at Brownsville Middle School in Miami, Florida, many years ago, when I was like 12. Okay? But the rally is just the beginning, the beginning of how educators are fed up with legislation and legislative control over our educational system. The way they take our wonderful public school funds and funnel it into their own private causes. It has to cease. It makes me cringe. Enough is enough. I also want to publicly thank this wonderful school system for supporting us, to the people on the board, and the administrators who subbed for us. Now you know how we feel.
Second grade.
Oh, my goodness. We feel this way daily. You only felt it for a few hours. Okay. Legislators will see that. We educators will never give up to funding our future. Because who are we? Who are we? We are Lee. Thank you.
Charla Fox.
It's good to see you all again. I hope you had a wonderful break and Happy New Year. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. First, I want to say you can also refer to me as the other Ken Savage now. Ken was the one who came in and took my class over. It was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. I really appreciate, and I know that the teachers I have all spoken with appreciate how you all got behind us and enabled us to go and do this with a very supportive atmosphere, and how you all came in and many of our administrators came in and got into our classrooms and saw what's going on currently every day in our classrooms, because things change. What was going on five years ago is not what's going on today. We have different challenges that we're meeting, and it is really nice to see that coming together. It helps each of us change our perspective. And in having those conversations that we're having now, I'm seeing administrators' perspectives change a little bit. I'm seeing teachers' perspectives change a little bit, and it's one of the most wonderful things that I've seen. I also want to express appreciation to the board members who came down and wished us well. I was at the district office, and Kathleen and Chris came out and saw us off. I know others of you went to other places, and it was truly appreciated. And then this morning, we had a walk-in. I was at South with my school and my students and my teachers, and we had 70 of us walking in together. We are coming together, and it is something that we have started, but we've got to have you with us. We've got to be able to continue this, and we ask your support in doing all the things that we need to do and doing the things you need to do during this legislative session. It's not gonna be a one-and-done. This was a wonderful, wonderful start, but we have so much more that has to be accomplished before they understand the challenges that they have put on us as teachers, as a school district, as board, as administrators, to help our students do what is best and be what is best for them. So I appreciate it. I look forward to seeing you all out at our sign waving next week and all the other things that are going on. I appreciate it. Thanks so much. You have a great week.
Kevin Daly.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, Dr. Atkins, and the board. My name is Kevin Daly. I'm the president of the Teachers Association of Lee County, and what else can I say other than Mina and Charla? I also was at the rally on Monday with about 15,000 of my closest friends from all over the state. I definitely want to express our appreciation for what you guys did as a board and what the district staff did in the classrooms all around, whether or not you saw us off with donuts, or just showed up, or pushed into a classroom, whether you were lucky enough to do second grade, or even kindergarten, or whether or not you were lucky enough to actually substitute in my daughter's class, Mr. Savage. That was a treat, I'm sure. But again, as Charla and them said, this is certainly not a one-and-done, and it's not the first thing. We did do the walk-ins today. We've got sign waving on the 21st, so we're gonna continue on the FEAs end on applying the pressure so that the legislators do what really is their one paramount duty, which is to appropriately fund public education. So we look forward to working with you guys to get that done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol Garanskas.
My name is Carol Garanskas. This is the first time I am speaking before you. I am from St. Augustine, Florida, but I hold the position of Secretary Treasurer of the Florida Education Association. And I just wanted to say on behalf... First, to Dr. Atkins and the school board for being so supportive. FEA has three core points that we are working on with Fund Our Future, and that is student success is paramount. That's number one of everything we do. Retain and recruit the best, bringing in the best, and then investing in our public schools, not vouchers and not charters. And so I want to say on behalf of the Florida Education Association, President Fed Ingram, Vice President Andrew Sparron, myself, how much we do appreciate what you all did to allow two, four people from every school, if they could find them, to attend the rally yesterday. For us, it is about funding the future of education, public education in this state for every child, regardless of zip code or socioeconomic privileges or non-privileges. So by all measurements that you could imagine, this was a successful rally and tally, take on Tallahassee, whatever you want to call it. 15,000, according to Capitol Police, attended the rally. We closed the streets down, and that does not happen in Tallahassee. It was so overwhelmingly successful that what we ended up seeing and knowing are the legislators came and asked us afterwards, what can we do on both sides of the aisle? And that's a step in the right direction. We had 17 speakers yesterday. We had high school and college students, teachers and parents, community members, PTA presidents, religious leaders, and national leaders, both of the union and the civil rights. Our education staff professionals, our teachers, and our parents had their voices heard collectively. On behalf of all public school employees, the FEA is asking our legislators for $2.4 billion this year, and that is to give across the board all school employees a 10% increase, regardless of what you do in that building, because there is no difference from a bus driver to a food service employee to a paraprofessional, to a teacher, to a custodian. They change the lives of a child, and there is someone there that that child seeks out and makes sure that they know that they're safe and feel safe in their environment. What we are asking for is that puts a librarian back in every library, a nurse in every school, guidance counselors, and mental health counselors, so that teachers aren't teaching mental health. God forbid they miss a sign. Are they held responsible? We need to get mental health people in. So what I am saying on behalf of everyone is it was successful. We all need funding. All of us, school board as well as educators, we're asking and we want to say thank you for your support and continued support. And what we'd like to do is this is just the start of a movement. There are 60 days in the legislature, and we want to make sure those legislators hear what our students...
Thank you.
The final speaker, Anthony Thomas.
Welcome back to the students and staff of the district. I too say that I support the rally and tally and giving our teachers and support staff and everyone in the system the monies that they need, but they also, when they give you the money that you need to have, you need to make sure you get school board members that's gonna spend that money wisely. Let me say that I'm very excited to come tonight and ask the board, especially Mr. Superintendent, we're gonna be taking this Sunday a group of about 10 young people to Washington, DC. And these young people are gonna spend a week up in DC, and they're going to sit in the Senate galleries, and they're gonna witness history. They're gonna witness the orderly, peaceful trial of a president. And that's gonna be very exciting for the young people. Regardless of where you stand on the impeachment, for these young people who are gonna be going on this trip, we've invited the president of the student government at Florida Gulf Coast, the president of the Democratic Club, and the president of the Republican Club. We've asked them to pick somebody. We're working to get some students from Lee County to go. We're gonna be leaving here this Sunday from the parking lot here out front. We took students to Obama's inauguration. We took them to President Trump's inauguration, and now we're gonna be taking them to witness history. The local legislative delegation community is very much in support. Several of them have donated because our local legislators do believe in public education. Contrary to what some people like to say, mostly all of them have been educated in public education, and they may have philosophical disagreements on how funding levels should be and how people's money ought to be spent, but you ought to know that they love public education. They respect and love the faculty and the staff and the students, and they're showing that by the private dollars that they're helping to fund this trip. So, Mr. Atkins, I would hope that the students that are gonna be going on this trip, you give them an excuse absence. Can you do that for me? They're gonna be missing four days of school, and I think this is a great educational opportunity for them, and I hope you will see that the students that we give you, you give them an excuse absence because they're gonna be getting the history lesson. They're gonna be meeting with Congressman Rooney while they're up there and with other people. They won't get an opportunity really to meet with the senators because they're gonna be in session six days out of the week, and then there's nonstop stuff with the impeachment trial. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We do have a couple more spots. If there's any teacher out there, my number, 239-265-2575. We got about three spots left open. If somebody wants to nominate some student in the district to go, we'd be more than happy to take them. With that, I yield back the time.
Thank you very much. Next is the approval of consent items, consent action items in the agenda. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak to the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding those recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Giovinelli.
I have none.
Ms. Patrica.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan.
I have none.
Ms. Gittens.
I have no polls.
Ms. Vaughn.
No polls.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Giovinelli and seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Please record your vote.
Join. You gotta join.
I know. I...
I clicked. Yay.
Okay, got it. Yeah. Okay.
It's been very, very, very slow all day. It's been very...
Thank you. Okay. Included in the approval... Oh, I didn't take the vote yet, did I?
We just voted.
It just hasn't been announced yet.
Okay. Included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming January 26 through February 1, 2020, as National School Choice Week, as well as January 27 through the 31, 2020, as Celebrate Literacy Week, Florida. Dr. Atkins, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first individual, Dominic Jameli, and his new position is Director, Planning, Growth Second person I want to introduce, Susan Ellinger. She is now the Assistant Director, Exceptional Student Education. Finally, as alluded to a little bit in public comment, Alice Beth, as we know her in Rotary, Barfield and other things, good things, Barfield, River Hall Elementary Principal, to the Alva School Principal. One other thing I just wanted to mention, that we did have the approval this evening of East Zone Middle School MMM total project cost. We do have Owen Ames Kimball representatives in the audience today. I just wanted to recognize them. They're the construction managers on that project, so... Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And now attorney's recommendation. Mr. Quick.
Yeah, this is the matter I referred to before, which is the case of School Board of Alachua County versus Richard Corcoran, Lee County Circuit Court Case Number 2018 CA 000025. This is the secondary challenge involving House Bill 7069. It was originally brought by, I believe, 12 counties. There's currently nine that are involved. Again, this is not the Florida Supreme Court appeal. This was originally... This was filed first in an attempt, as I understand it, an attempt to get before the Florida Supreme Court because they were attempting to stop a disbursement of local capital improvement money. And ultimately, what ended up happening is the Florida Supreme Court did not hear it, referred it back down to the state court, where it has effectively sat dormant for the last two years. The state has since shifted where those funds are coming from. They're now... They've come up with more PICO money, public education capital outlay money, so the funding, at least for the time being, has come from there. There's also an issue with what's called the biennial adoption of the statutes. That's a legal formality whereby the legislature adopts all of their previously adopted statutes, and so there's an argument with regard to whether the challenge would be moot. The case came back to us because the trial court realized it was still there and pending, and started to set a case status conference to move forward. In that case, it is being handled by the original attorneys. In that case, it is being handled by the original attorneys, the gentleman by the name of John Borkowski, who was hired by the, for lack of a better term, Coalition of School Districts. And he is retained on an hourly rate as opposed to the appeal. I mentioned that because that's being hired by a local Florida attorney by the name of Steve Branick, who is on a flat rate. The issue came before us because with regard to the mootness, and we had a conference call with the other school districts, the nine that are remaining, five of the nine had stated that they wished to withdraw. I asked them to go back to determine whether if the school districts withdrew, if the state would agree to waive their rights to potentially to tax any costs and fees, which the state has agreed to do, that if the parties do drop it, they will do that. So it's come back before us. The remaining three school boards will also be considering that. So five of the nine have already said that they are going to withdraw. Two of the other ones are hearing, having the same motion and are at the same discussion tonight, and one of them will be having it in a few weeks. So my recommendation is to withdraw that case because I do think that there are good legal arguments with regard to the mootness and it's being paid on an hourly rate. And then also in terms of actually collecting, since the money has already been paid out, the realities in terms of collecting would be challenging. And now, again, this only relates to the secondary case of the state court. This does not impact, or the withdrawal of it would not impact the Supreme Court challenge. That's a separate legal case. So the withdrawal, if the school board agrees to withdraw this or approves a withdrawal, it would not impact the current, the appeal before the Florida Supreme Court.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Board members, you've heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approve authorization to dismiss or withdraw from school bid, School Board of Alachua County versus Richard Corcoran, Leon County Circuit Court Case Number 2018 CA 000025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli and seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Any discussion? Please record your vote. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Dr. Atkins, will you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing item?
Just as soon as I get there, here we go. My recommendation is approval to adopt the District Educational Facilities Plan for the fiscal year 2020 through 2039. Each district school board shall prepare a tentative District Educational Facilities Plan that includes long-range planning for facilities needs over five years, 10-year and a 20-year period. The plan must be developed in coordination with the general purpose local government and be consistent with local government comprehensive plans. The effective date of this adoption shall be January 15th, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. I'll now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval to adopt the District Educational Facilities Plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2039. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to speak? Anyone on the left? Seeing none, I'll now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 14th, 2020. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Yes, Madam Chair. Recommended action is approval to adopt the District Educational Facilities Plan for the fiscal year 2020 through 2039. Each district school board shall prepare a tentative District Educational Facilities Plan that includes long-range planning for facilities needs over five years, 10-years and 20-year periods. The effective date of this adoption shall be January 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Giovinelli?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Morgan? Any discussion? Please record your vote. Thank you. Now it's time for board members' comments or reports. Mrs. Morgan?
None.
Mrs. Vaughn?
That's not true.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm so used to saying that, but tonight I want to say a couple of things. First of all, to Lauren, thank you for choosing education. I am excited for you going to Colorado. I am so excited, but you must come back.
I will.
Okay, good. I want to thank the superintendent and all of the staff for being so, so, so supportive of our teachers when they were up in Tallahassee. We're hearing lots of great stories about what happened in some of the classrooms. So we'll have some things to laugh about as we move forward.
Yes, we will.
Yeah. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I do. There's supposed to be something on the screen at this point about the census. I'll go on and make my other... Here comes Jason. Oh, you're coming? Okay. There we go. Okay, and Ms. Ware already alluded to the fact that I am the Census Liaison for the Lee County School District and I'm very thankful to all the staff members that have helped already and done a great job of creating this special flyer that's unique to us as a school district. And also, you're going to be seeing a lot of things coming out over the next eight weeks or so. For those of you who have questions about the census, the census is something that is, it's from the US Constitution. So it's required every 10 years and it started way back in 1790. And the census is tasked with counting every single individual living in the US. As a county, we face some challenges. There are particular areas which historically have been more difficult to count. I've been working with Mrs. LaFontaine from early childhood education because the young kids, the babies, they're very, very difficult to count. There are usually undercounts with that. So why is the census so important? Well, one thing is, this is how we get the number of representatives that go to the House of Representatives. And so with the burgeoning population explosion in Florida, we're likely to become even more of a force, let's say, in the House of Representatives in terms of the numbers. This is also dependent, we also have the redistricting. So we have House, the state, the State House, and congressional redistricting. So that will be interesting for our political parties to battle that out. Something else that is important that a lot of people don't think about is that businesses look at census data. And this is important for us and especially areas, for instance, my colleague here that lives in Lehigh Acres. Lehigh is quickly growing and I know Lehigh would just love to have more businesses locate in that area.
Starbucks.
What?
Starbucks.
Well, and Starbucks is going to be prime because they will look at demographics and population. And you know they have a very specific formula. But retail stores, factories, offices, all of those businesses will look at data from the census and that will determine where they're going to locate or relocate. So why is it really important for schools? And this is right on this flyer that we developed because where do we get? Our head start, an early head start money? Well, that's federal money. As a matter of fact, throughout the US, there's seven, let's see, $675 billion of federal money, not just all for us or for Florida, but that much money on the table to be distributed among the states. And so we don't want to leave money on the table like we did last census. Florida had an undercount of a little over 25% and that's leaving money on the table. And in our districts, we had, depending on the district, I think Fort Myers was, I didn't write it down, was it at 64%?
Seventy-two.
Was it at 70?
Seventy-two.
Okay, I was thinking it was a little lower, but anyway, that's money left on the table. So head start, early head starts, some special education programs, our school lunch programs and a myriad of other programs that really affect our children. SNAP programs for food assistance and children's insurance and all of those. So bottom line is, you may grow tired of hearing me, I won't do it every meeting, maybe every other meeting, coming up with something and reminding you about the census. Official day is April 1st, but you will start receiving your invitation to respond to the census starting in mid-March. Not everybody's going to get it the same day. They don't want to overwhelm the system, but you'll start getting this in mid-March. And April 1st is the official day, but you can respond before then. And so if a baby is born on April 1st, that baby counts. Whoever is living in your house at that time counts. And so we'll talk more about that, but let's not leave any money on the table. And it's going to be easier than ever for people to respond to the census because this is the first census where you can actually respond online. There are going to be reminders if you don't respond. There are going to be options for phone, for paper. There's going to be countless languages that the census is offered in. So just spread the word. Make sure you complete the census because it's dollars in our pockets as a community. Just real quickly, what I want to say about the teachers, and I think all of you have heard me mention a time or two that I was a teacher for 38 years, and so my heart is always with the teachers. Now, my body is not with taking that grueling trip up to Tallahassee, turning around, coming back and all of that, but I was with you in spirit, let's just say. I was really, really happy to hear what the FEA, let's see, I've just lost her name. Is she still here? The FEA, I was really, really happy to hear what Carol had to say, that FEA is wanting $2.4 billion, and here's the key, across the board to all school employees. Not everybody, you know, there are people that are coming out and saying, oh, thank you, Governor DeSantis, for offering 47.5 to our beginning teachers. But all of you teachers out there, and I think probably most of you that spoke today are veteran teachers, you know how that's going to fly for the seasoned teachers. It's not well thought out. Do we appreciate the idea of that, which of course, you know, it's up to the legislature to do that? Absolutely, we do. And I think, not I think, I know all of us stand behind the teachers. Some of us do it in different ways. I'm perhaps a little more radical than some people and I would say, we need to go for the big bucks and we need to continue to let our legislators know that it's going to be catastrophic for Florida if we don't pass money to fund the schools with the teachers. Because as I've said many, many times, you can build Taj Mahal schools, which are nice, don't have teachers, good teachers to staff their schools. You have nothing but a pretty building. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Mrs. Gittens?
Okay, before you put my things up, I have a couple of things in and I'll tell you. First of all, congratulations to all the new appointees. Good job. Just to piggyback on the census, it is going to take the village plus some to get our numbers up. And I'm working with Ms. Vaughn and some other community members out in Lehigh. Just to give you an example in those numbers she was talking about, in Lehigh, there is one particular tract between Leonard and 82 and Gunnery and the canal, maybe about 20 blocks long. And in the 2010 census, we missed out on about 34% of the people in that area. They estimated the population at that time to be about 7,000 some. And if you take 34% of the 7,000, it's about 2,500, there is $1,400 approximately per person, per year in funding from the federal government because of the census. So if you take that 2,500, multiply it by 1,400 per year, that's 3.5 million per year or $35 million just in that 20-block area that our community missed out on. So that's just how important it really is. And we're all working together to make sure that the word gets out there. I heard from several teachers that have been to the insurance presentation and I told them that I would read their email for the record and I will do that. Dear board members, as a teacher and parent, there's got to be a better option for us. As part of the CSI committee, it was mentioned that the school district may be joining with Lee Health as a part of our new health options. With no teacher raises, how is a family supposed to support medical care? A bi-weekly paycheck is less than $1,500 for many because many people are leaving or retiring and a family plan, for example, if it's a single parent, has a payout of pocket of $5,400. That's kind of tough when your total bring home may be 30,000 after taxes with rent, mortgage, car, et cetera. Can we please find a better medical plan option where teachers and their families can actually afford medical costs? What insurance plans are the sheriffs and Lee Health using and can we piggyback? And it's on teachers supporting teachers. So I wanted that in the record, please. Also, I sent to the board this week a email requesting a workshop to discuss the selection of our board attorney and hopefully I will get a response back on when that will be, Ms. Madam Chair.
I think we're waiting for the superintendent and staff to get all the information together and then we'll set the date.
Okay. Now we can go ahead with my pictures. Just a couple of things that, oh, he put music. We don't need music. Just a few pictures. This is from Harns Marsh. They had their very first, is it going? They had their very first winter festival and it was a really huge success, including Spider-Man was there for Christmas. This was at Alva School where you're going to be going in Barfield. And then the Sheriff's Department and... And then the Sheriff's Department and other community groups did bike giveaways, we were at that. And this was the Lehigh Rotary, a free Christmas dinner. And they served a lot of the community. At the Kwanzaa Quality of Life, and our own Ms. Vaughn was there participating, Quality of Life did an excellent presentation for Kwanzaa. Now, these next couple of slides are students of mine that are now in the community working. And the first two, I had to go get a, can you pause it one second? I had to go get a root canal, and I had to go from one dentist to the next dentist. And each dentist I went to, the dental assistant was one of my previous students. So, that just shows you they're everywhere throughout the community. And the next one is one of my students from Lehigh Senior, and she's on Wink News every morning, you see her, Sabrina, out there every day. And the next one is Ms. Morg, not Morgan, Jordan. And I went to the opening of the first Lehigh Army Recruitment Center. And the young man that was in the first picture was the first recruit from that, he's the first one to be, join the service from that particular new recruitment center. And he happens to be a senior at East Lee County High School. So we had to get a picture of that. And this is the opening, and these are the servicemen that run, and women, that run the center. And yes, I went back to my roots at East Lee County High School to teach classes. Now you can pause it for one second. Someone mentioned, I think Ms. Fox mentioned, how things change. Some change and some stay the same. One of the things that changed, I didn't have to write a pass, I didn't have that little book. They just get on their Chromebook and just put it in there. I don't have to do anything, that was wonderful. One thing that doesn't change is teenagers' attitudes at times. So this one young lady walks in about 15 minutes late, and I asked her, okay, hurry up and get started. And she turns around and says, Ms., why you sweating me? So, I said, I'm back home, it's okay. And so, anyway, we got along fine. I had, and give us the next one. The class that I took over was for Mr. Moore. It was Mr. Moore's history class at East Lee County High School. And the last thing that I asked the students was, well, tell me about Mr. Moore. What do you think about Mr. Moore? He's not here, so you can tell me. So, Mr. Moore, I hope you're watching, your students said, he's a coach, he has a beard, he looks like Mr. Clean, he interacts with us, he helps us understand our work, he's a great teacher, he's handsome, he's different in his perspective with us, he helps us use his and our experience and experience new things, he's a good counselor, and he talks about the world with us. So, congratulations, Mr. Moore, you are a wonderful teacher, I enjoyed taking your class for you, and I hope you were successful on your trip. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
I'll be quick. Okay, so, I am sorry that I could not make it yesterday, I had any intention of being there, but I had multiple meetings to attend. But I was at Island Coast this morning, at their walk-in, at 6:30 this morning. I was there before the teachers, I was waiting for them. But I really appreciate what you all do, and we will be up there at the end of the month advocating as well, just so you know that. We must keep fighting. There's a couple of pictures, Ms. Constant Davis-White had sent this to me. This was celebrating and recognizing student success, or what they call Cars. And what that is, it's a partnership initiative with the Lee County Black History Society and the School District of Lee County, with the support from the Department of Diversity and Inclusion. And these students are recognized, they're given a medallion, they're given a monetary gift, and it's in a public-based event, so they're really proud of being there. And they are chosen from the Tier 3 schools, from the teachers. But that was really exciting. This right here was Career Source. This was Education Power. So, we were there with Valerie, she's from the Fort Myers Technical School. And this was our grand opening for that, which they also work with our education department. And I also found out that they will actually, if you qualify, they will pay for you to go to school. So, which is really a great deal. Everybody needs to check that out. So, that was a very nice event. Kathleen was there as well, there was hundreds, it was packed. And they're going to do a great thing with us, they work with us as well. So these are just showing us partnerships that we have within the community. And then, and as Ms. Gittens said, we attended the U.S. Army Center grand opening. And Ms. Ware, we were speaking about that today. So, Mr. Savage and I, we're having a whole conversation regarding that, and we will be sending an update out to the people who attended the forum, as well as, we'll definitely include you in on that. But we have not forgotten Franklin Park, we're constantly looking at where we're going to go with that.
You have a meeting, a community meeting, or are we just sending out the relations?
We'll be sending out the updates from our previous meeting of what's taken, where we're at today. Because at the meeting, we had stated that we would keep people informed. But I'll definitely talk with you afterwards, and I can meet with you anytime you'd wish. Be more than happy to do so. And the kids that came to advocate for Veterans Park, amazing. They were really amazing, and they make me feel good. We went to, we had our EDAC meeting last night, we had a lot of great speakers, Ms. Jessica Duncan was there, our new, HoDAC, and I apologize, our...
Our coordinator for...
HoDAC, right?
Yes, HoDAC.
Okay, thank you. I thought I spelled, said his name wrong.
For Equity and Civil Rights.
Thank you, Ryan. And he was sharing with the EDAC Committee on what his role is, and if they had any questions to ask. I know Ms. Duncan had quite a few questions asked of her. And I think that they really, the committee feels really good, and they're excited about going to, they're recommending that EDAC Committee go and start visiting schools, to see the positive things that are taking place out there in the district versus all the negative. So, that's, they wanted me to share that with the Board tonight. And that is it. And congratulations to all of you who have been promoted or moved, thank you for what you do.
Ms. Fisher, can I please say one additional thing, really quickly? I forgot to mention that the, one of the other things with the census is they are looking for hundreds of people to work. At $15.50 an hour, you can set your own hours to work, and all you need to do is to go on census.gov. A great thing for teachers with part-time jobs, and you just have to be 18 years and above, so even our students can look into that. Thank you.
[inaudible]
It depends on where you're at, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, you're finished?
Oh, yes, I am.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
So, Lauren, unfortunately, our Chief of Human Resources left. I was going to ask her to stand, so that you would know who to approach in four years when you return to Lee County with that teaching degree. Please do come back, you're obviously a bright light for our future, and I really hope to see you back here. You live in paradise, right? That's the first thing. Second thing is, Dr. Atkins, could you provide me with some guidance as to whether the gentleman in the back who spoke about the sidewalk at Allen Park, whether, maybe not tonight, but whether that's something you want planning, to get in touch with the city of Fort Myers, or if you want the electeds to get involved? If you want the electeds to get involved, send us an email, please. Otherwise, I will assume that you'll have staff work on that.
I will start with staff and go from there.
Great, perfect.
Let you know.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight was the rally and tally. You guys, really, really, really amazing. Between this administration, this whole leadership team, and most importantly, our teachers and our staff, I was provided with yet another very, very, very proud moment. I'm very, very proud to be part of the School District of Lee County. Seeing our superintendent and members of his staff in classrooms was hysterical, and really, really, really inspiring, just really inspiring. And just yet another example of the exceptional leadership in this district. For you to embrace the importance of what our teachers did yesterday was truly phenomenal. And then that video that the Communications Department put out, I did a little research, 335 school board meetings. Guess how many views we have? 3,500 views. One video of the superintendent and his staff being hysterical in a classroom, 13,500 views.
Wow.
In less than 24 hours.
Wow.
So, Communications Department yet again hits the ball out of the park. Our Board contributed. Ms. Morgan provided donuts and a send-off to the crew leaving the district. Our Board Chair, Ms. Fisher, was a guest teacher. Ms. Jordan did the walk-in at Island Coast High School. Ms. Vaughn was active on social media. Ms. Gittens was a guest teacher. You see the support here? The support for you guys is real. And the most important thing was our teachers and our staff. That was, it was your day. It was your day to shine. And what I think you did yesterday was you loaded the bases. To use a sports analogy, you loaded the bases for us and for this community to bring home a win for teachers, staff, and students in Lee County. The public and the legislators, I believe, get it. I believe they're starting to pay attention. I do, I do want to caution that I don't think we're going to get everything we're going to ask for. You miss 100% of the shots you don't take, so you might as well ask. But I want us to go into this with a sense of sort of reality. Senator Diaz, as you all know, moved a bill out of the First Committee yesterday, Senate Bill 1088, that will give us a lot of what we're asking for. But we have a really long way to go. So, some of you have mentioned this at the table tonight, this is just the beginning. And I implore you, I know that you have a plan next week to wave signs. I will be in Tallahassee with many of my colleagues, so we can't join you for that sign raising. But believe me, we will be talking about this. But in addition to that, there's 90 days, this is not a sprint, it's a marathon, there's 90 days. I, you have my word that I will continue to engage our legislators and our community. And I believe Kevin has a plan for continued communication, because I fear that there's a sense that this was a one-and-done, this was a flash in the pan, a day of a rally. If you guys can continue this momentum through 90 days, I believe that some serious change can take place. I'm just, I'm really, I'm inspired by what you did. The message you brought to Tallahassee was so positive. And I'll tell you, sitting at this dais, when a member of the public goes to that microphone and hits me hard with a negative, it's difficult for me as a human being to want to help that person. You guys didn't do that yesterday. You guys went up there with a positive message, which makes people want to help you. So, I'm on your side, give me some marching orders. If I'm not doing enough, you want me to do some more, give me some marching orders, I'm happy to, happy to fulfill them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Giavanelle.
Okay, I'm going to try to make mine short, but that's, sometimes I got a list a little bit. So I just wanted to bring up the fact that the Proximity Student Plan enrollment, we passed that tonight, and I'm very excited about that, because that's something that I've been wanting for a while and campaigned on that, is to get, bring our, bring our community back. And I think that we're closer to one step, having that neighborhood schools and feel and community feel. So I'm excited, and I commend the staff and everybody for heading us in that right direction, and I'm excited about that. I wanted to bring up Kevin Mulhern. I actually saw Kevin Anderson, City Council Kevin Anderson, last night, and he brought up the Allen Park sidewalks to me. And I am actually meeting with him on, at the sidewalks on Thursday. So I'll tell you the time, it's, but if somebody wants to join me, that's great.
We could probably make that happen.
Yeah, so, and that's Thursday morning at 10:30. And then, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. The Science and Inventors Fair is this weekend at FGCU, if you guys have a moment. And it's going to be a little tight, because we have the Martin Luther King Gala as well that night. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, and plus, the breakfast is on Monday, and I'm excited about that. Friday night is Chitty Chitty Bang Bang at Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, and I just wanted to let everybody know about that, and who, I love Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, so I'm excited. So, and then, I think I said everything. Congratulations on the promotions, and I want to end with the rally and tally. So I support you guys going to that, and we go next week. So we're going to keep that momentum when we go. So I wanted to let them know that, and I'm glad to see that you went as one voice. I think the one voice is very important, as, for the one common goal, the teachers, because they really are important, and staff. And so, I want to just end with that, and to continue that momentum, as others have said, that's really what I wanted to point out, that's very important, and we are Lee. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Lauren Skapansky, our student representative.
So, like I said, I do attend Ida Baker High School, and unfortunately, we did just, as a school, suffer a loss of a student on the other night. And our school, as a community, is really banding together to help support like their family and all their friends, and all our prayers go out to them. And we're like assembling a rally and everything to bring awareness to like the topic and everything, because she was a loved member of our community, involved in lots of clubs, and teachers loved her, she was an amazing girl. And it is hitting our school kind of hard, considering that that seat will now be empty. And unfortunately, she does not get to wake up in the morning and come to school, and bless all of us with our presence. So, that's a major thing happening at our school. And with the Inventors Fair, I know a lot of elementary students, school students have been working very hard on all of their inventions. I get the joy of working at the Heights Foundation, and the joy of working with those students, and I know they're working extra hard to get their inventions done. But there is another one in April that they're also doing. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lauren. And thank you, Lauren, for being with us tonight, and for all you do with the Student Advisory Committee and at your school. Many of my colleagues have responded to public speakers, and yes, the census is extremely important, and we all need to do our part and spread the word. I thought that Lila and Esaw from Veterans Park, in their appeal for us to continue to support the arts, did an excellent job. And since I've been on the Board, and this is my 10th year, this Board has always supported the arts, and we hopefully will continue to do so. Mr. Getz has gone, but I really want to say that I have appreciated his dedication and persistence in advocating for substitute and guest teachers. He has been tireless in that. And as we move forward and do our census count, and look at the potential of increasing our millage by taking that to the voters this year, hopefully, we'll be able to provide more compensation for those people. Imagine, over 500 of them in one day substituting for teachers. We couldn't run the district without them, that's a huge number. And I'm glad to hear that. Mr. Mulhern will be contacted by staff to talk about this safe location for the sidewalk in the Allen Park area. Mina, Charla, Kevin, and Carol, thank you for sharing that experience. I had the opportunity to be in a 7th grade class, two World History, one American History, and two Civics, and I had a great time. But I will tell you that it gave me a renewed appreciation, because it's been a long time since I've been in a classroom all day long. And I, as much as the kids were awesome, and I enjoyed it tremendously, and really felt like I had to stretch my brain to keep up with them, the idea of that, doing that every day would be a little bit difficult for me. And so, and you guys know the main reason, so anyway, because when it was, when I had a go, I couldn't. So, anyway, but it was awesome. And I know that Dr. Atkins now wants to be a permanent guest sub in 2nd grade at least once a month. Mr. Thomas, thank you for once again providing an opportunity for some of our students to witness history. You've done that... You've done that a few times in the past, and I really want to commend you on putting your efforts and energies into positive activities. Thank you. Let me see. Congratulations to those administrators with new assignments, and I know you'll do an awesome job, just as you've been doing. I want to thank all staff for all that they do for the kids in our county and to support one another. Tomorrow is District Advisory Committee as well as Student Advisory Committee, and I'm going to try to spend some time at both of those. And that's all I have. Mr. Quick.
Just one thing. It's not as fun as the stuff you guys have been talking about you did yesterday. There are two litigation matters that are being handled that have been referred out to outside counsel. There are some that require some update and some further guidance from the board. So we're going to be convening closed-door attorney-client sessions on those. The cases are Lori Giordano versus Lee County School Board and Brooke Junkins versus the Lee County School Board. So we will coordinate with staff as well as the outside counsel. They're being handled by different counsel to get that scheduled. Probably it'll be in the next month or so, because the Junkins matter is scheduled for a mediation on February 26th, so we will work to get it scheduled before then. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Dr. Atkins.
Yes, first of all, I do believe we'll be able to get a workshop date that Ms. Gittens had referred to and that the chair had asked about. Hopefully, as early as tomorrow, we'll have at least some feedback to you in terms of when that might be. To include the information that was included, one of the things, I did have a conversation with Dr. Pruitt today about the process, that just wanted you to be aware that when it comes to some of the information relative to the candidates in a search, that comes with the process. So some of the things that were asked for, human resources in the process of collecting as a part of that search, and then they will be able to produce that for our board members. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the mention of the historical trip, or another historical opportunity for students up in Washington, D.C. And typically with excused absences, those are something that we do allow for in those... Looking at Dr. Spiro, and he's shaking, he said as well, so that we do that for our students when they're in attendance to those type of events. So thank you for bringing that up. Just kind of go through who went where that wasn't already mentioned. You know, some names were mentioned, but I wanted to talk about... First and foremost, I'm very appreciative of you all. You've always been very, very supportive of teachers, and this is just another example as a board, because I've heard that that's one thing that we certainly, I think we all agree on. But in terms of where some of our team went, I thought you might be interested. Mr. Trey Davis went out to River Hall to substitute in a fourth-grade classroom mathematics. That sounds like a pretty good fit. Here's one. You know, Ken, I think was mentioned, he went into math at South High. But this is interesting. Lauren Stillwell, who's also never been in a classroom before, this is absolutely a first opportunity. She had to go into Samantha Howard's classroom, Teacher of the Year.
Oh.
Yeah, there's no pressure there whatsoever. And of course, as was mentioned, I went into second grade. And I've got one more I'm going to mention in terms of staff. I had the opportunity to go into second grade, and you know, I've had a chance to teach at the middle school level. I've taught high school kids. I've been at college level, never at the elementary level.
Haven't lived.
And I've always been in awe of teachers at the elementary level. I mean, their ability to literally put on this other persona and the energy that they bring to it, you know? But after that experience, I'm even more in awe of what they do every single day. So yes, second-grade energy is just amazing. And I wish you all had been able to see the second-grade recess at Bay Shore Elementary. So my hat's off to Jolene Reynolds, who was the teacher that I had the opportunity to sub in for. And the second-grade team out there was fantastic to help this old guy try to navigate some of that stuff. And then, of course, the administrative team, Ben Osman, and that crew out there was just... I really appreciate them. And then, of course, if second grade wasn't interesting enough, Dr. Pruitt and Will Rothenberg went into a kindergarten classroom. And I just wish there was... I hope there's film of that somewhere. I know there's some pictures. But that was...
It took two of them, though, right?
Yeah, it took two of them, well, yes. And they were co-teaching as well. But yes, that was pretty awesome. They went to Colonial Elementary. Anyway, just hats off to... I always say this is a fantastic team. And a lot of the other members that wanted to participate, I think the next time they get the opportunity, they're going to be out in the classroom as well. So anyway, thank you. That's it for my comments.
Thank you very much. The next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, January 27th, there'll be a board workshop at 1:00 P.M. And on Tuesday, January 28th, there'll be a board briefing meeting at 1:00, as well as an action meeting at 6:00. At this...
Can I remind the board to convene right down there?
Yes.
Red. For a quick picture before we go out and talk to our friends in the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and board members will take a picture right after this meeting concludes.
Anybody wants to volunteer to take that picture? Please take it.
Lauren volunteered.
Why don't you be in the picture? Yeah, we're in the picture. We'll get somebody.
At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Gittens, second by Mrs. Giovinelli. Please record your vote. Motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned.